And, hey, I imagine are all listed in Section 6. So the first is for Forty-Fifth Parallel Woodfire Grill. This includes live music, on-premises. Any here present for Forty-Fifth Parallel that wish to speak to the matter? Any questions regarding Forty-Fifth Parallel's special amusement permit?
I have one.
Yes.
How many times this summer are they going to have live music and how late are they going to operate?
They don't give the frequency, nor do they indicate the number of live, I don't believe it's, I believe the question is asked.
Let me see, were they even asked a question?
Yep, so that information isn't requested on the application.
I found them to be extremely loud and late last year.
How many?
I live right across the road.
You live right across the road?
Right.
Okay.
I'm on Shore Road.
Okay.
So it's just, and someone had told me at the town hall that you only get a certain amount of dates. So I was just going to be not here on those dates.
Okay, I don't, yeah, like I said, like Donnie said, there isn't, there isn't a list. It's not, the information isn't required.
Okay.
Any other questions regarding Forty-Fifth Parallel? Next up, Four Seasons Cafe.
They're not.
They've pulled.
They've pulled, okay. Moving on to Rangeley Friends of the Arts. And they, they're at 2493 Main Street in Rangeley. And they, they will have concerts in the theater venue, mostly seating, but sometimes people get up and spontaneously dance in the aisles or in the back area. Also live theater with both live and recorded sound. Anyone here from Rangeley Friends of the Arts that wishes to speak? Any questions regarding the permit? Next is a permit from The Shed located at 2647 Main Street. And they indicate they'll run their barbecue restaurant and they'll have small bands and karaoke. Anyone here from The Shed that wishes to speak? Any questions regarding The Shed's application? Next, the Rangeley Hospitality, Inc., also known as the Rangeley Inn, located at 244 Main Street. And they have charitable events, weddings, meetings, workshops. They have live music, both acoustic and amplified. And they also have a DJ with amplification. Anyone here from the Rangeley Inn that wishes to speak to their application? Any questions about the application?
Did you miss Moose Alley? I had Moose Alley before the Rangeley Inn.
Sorry about that. Oh, you're right. Sorry about that. Moose Alley, thank you, Dave. At 2809 Main Street. Family Entertainment Center, Bowling Alley Arcade Restaurant. Anyone here from Moose Alley that wishes to speak to their application? Any questions regarding the application? Next up, Gingerbread LLC located at 55 Carey Road. And they indicate they have small group or individual musicians, DJs mostly for special events. Anyone here from Gingerbread? Any questions regarding the application? Next up, Loom Lodge Inn at 16 Pickford Road. Restaurant and pub with function facilities for banquets and weddings and music to accompany events. And we do have someone here from Loom Lodge Inn. How are you, Joanne? Good. Any questions for Joanne and the special amusement permit? Anything different this year than prior years?
No, we'll have DJs and occasional band for the weddings and the music stopped promptly at 10:00.
Okay. Thank you. Next, Mountain Star Estate LLC located at 2057 Main Street. And this is a wedding and event venue. It will include DJs, bands, and community events. And we have got Stacy Boras and Yara Salia here. It's the big barn up in back of the farmhouse. Anything else you'd like to add, Stacy?
No, can I, can I get a little clarification, though? I know there's the 10 o'clock, like Joanne was just speaking of. Is that for outside if you have an inside venue that's?
Soundproof.
Soundproof.
Do you still have that, that time? Like, is it different for bars or restaurants or indoor events?
Would this have to do with the noise ordinance, Donnie?
Probably not up there, but.
I would think it would be outside if it'd be earlier than inside.
Yeah. Wedding's going to be longer. That's what I don't remember.
We could certainly look into that and get back to you.
Thank you.
Just looking to be compliant.
Yes, exactly. So would that also fall under the Forty-Fifth? Is there a different time for outside versus inside?
Yeah, we'll, we'll check into that and see.
Two and three o'clock in the morning's a little much for me.
Yeah, yeah, we'll definitely look into that.
Cindy, how do we follow up with that with you?
Well, I think we'll, Tricia, Tricia will reach out to you. Next up is Forks in the Air at 2485 Main Street. And this is, they've got fine dining restaurants setting and they may have one or two people present for acoustic music. And we've got Karen Seaman here. Hi, Karen. Anything you wish to add?
No.
Okay.
We have, we, I've never had live music, but we just try just in case.
Okay. Any questions for Karen as she represents Forks in the Air? Next up, Bald Mountain Camps at 125 Bald Mountain Road. And they cater banquets, weddings. Anyone here from Bald Mountain Camps? Steve, I couldn't see you in the back.
I'm very nervous of the lady I'm sitting next to. I hope she doesn't hear us. We have some more. We don't, we don't stop properly at 10:00. Soon after.
Yeah. Any questions for Steve? I didn't see you, sorry. Country Club Inn at 56 Country Club Road. They also take in small weddings, reunions, receptions, four parties up to 60 people.
Margie?
And I like them to end at 10:00.
All right. Any questions from Margie? All right, next up, Sarge's Sports Pub and Grub at 2454 Main Street. I think I saw Jamie come in. Oh, hey, Jamie. Restaurant lounge by bands primarily Friday and Saturday. And you've got a lot going on.
Yeah, we definitely don't stop at 10:00.
Okay. Any questions for Jamie Sargeant?
Yeah, when are you opening?
Tomorrow at 3:00.
Wow.
We'll have our grand opening in the end of June when the deck and stuff is done. But we'll be, the downstairs will be done tomorrow if all goes wrong.
Excellent.
I'm going to sneak out right after this if you don't mind. I've got a little bit to do.
Yeah, no, no, not at all. All right. Jamie going once, twice, okay. Next up is Parkside in Maine at 2520 Main Street. And one or two musicians playing on our deck from Memorial to the last week of August. Not at night. It would be from a 12 to 6:00 p.m. timeframe, maybe sporadically in September as well. Cash here or anyone from Parkside? Any questions regarding this application? And that is it for the public hearing for special amusement permits. Is there any questions, comments before we close the public hearing? Once, twice, all right. All right, we might as well move right into a regular Board of Selectmen's meeting. So welcome everyone to a regular meeting from May 21st, 2018. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, just a reminder that Board of Selectmen's meetings are meetings that are required to be held in public, but they are not public meetings. So if you wish to speak, you'll need to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. Anyone who hasn't signed in, please do so. There's a sign-in sheet over where you enter to the back of the room. John, do you have any adjustments to the agenda? We've got one adjustment to the agenda. We'll be having an executive session with our personnel consultant, Anna Lee Rosenblatt. So that will be under Section 4056A. Next up is to review and approve meeting minutes for May 14th, 2018.
Make your.
Go ahead.
I make motion to accept the meeting for the Monday, May 14th, 2018. And presented with any errors or corrections.
Show's motion.
Second.
And Donnie's seconds. Any suggested corrections? All is in favor. Any public present to speak on a non-agenda? Yes, Larry?
By me. This has been very difficult for me. It's been working on me for several months now. But I want to pass out to you a policy that you all should probably know this in your picture, too. I've been reviewing the legal bills of this house for the last three months. And we're over budget by about $8,000 with 90 days to go. And it appears that a lot of the charges that I've been reviewing, the authority has not necessarily been given properly. I do remember one time under the marijuana moratorium that our chairman was asked to please contact the attorney and come back with the information and give it to the board on what direction we should head, being with the marijuana department. As I review the bills exceeding $58,000 for 90 days, I find that there's been a lot of communication by individual board members to the attorney, which is against the policies of communities. So I think we need to address it while it's addressable before it's out of hand. Thank you.
John, do you wish to comment?
Yeah, Larry called me this morning and I had a chance to do some research. I actually dug out all the bills for the entire year, including the most recent one, which was for the month of March, which I did ask Tracy to hold the check for that one until we could look into this further. However, one of those bills for $3,362 was for June of last year. So realistically, that bill should have been allocated to last year's budget. So what's been built to date is roughly $53,000. So you're about $3,000 over budget. What Larry told me was that a lot of the, it looks like in the past two years, the budget was about $30,000. That's 2016 and '17. And last year, the budget committee increased it to $50,000 because there was a major issue with the cement plant. And he was concerned that it still hasn't gone to court, so we've spent all this money. But in reality, one of the problems I see with the billing is the attorneys haven't itemized each line item on these bills in terms of time. Most attorney bills I've ever seen have a breakdown, a half hour, quarter of an hour, 10 minutes, two hours, whatever. So there's no way to tell how much of those bills actually went to the cement plant. So I'm here and there was an awful lot of discussion. There was a lot of issues with the planning board, a lot of issues with the Board of Appeals. And that would have eaten up an awful lot of attorney time, Larry. But I can't tell you based on the bills.
If I can hear you for a second. We allocated $35,000 for the concrete plant. We haven't even gone there yet. We're way over.
That's what I'm trying to get across, except that there was an awful lot of legal reference to it early on in the year in terms of planning board and Board of Appeals and all of those issues surrounding whatever the code enforcement officer had done to apparently issue an initial permit. So that's not resolved yet completely, but it did, it looks like it ate up an awful lot of those bills. Most of these bills for most of the year dealt with major issues you have going on. That concrete plant was one. Another one is the airport project, the park project downtown. There was easements involved with the neighbors' properties. You put out a road bond or a bond and that requires bond council fee. So up until the most recent bill, I actually didn't see a lot of abuse of the policy, except that in the last month of March, there did seem to be an awful lot of calls from the selectmen. There were a few prior, but not as many as in the last month of March. So that, that bill has not been paid yet. It's $3,100. Your policy gives you a couple of options. First off, the policy requires that the town manager give approval for anybody that needs to have a legal opinion, any department head, any employee, any selectman. And I think the reason for that is because the town manager is responsible for making sure the budget doesn't get overdrawn. So it's really good timely way, you know, time, it's very timely to bring this up right now because we're right there at an overdrawn budget. So the Board of Selectmen or the town manager can give approval for an individual selectman to contact the town attorney. The Board of Selectmen can, according to the policy, vote to pay the bill subsequent to an act of a selectman calling. I mean, there may be legitimate reasons. Or it is another provision that if anybody did this in violation of the policy, then the bill should be broken out so that that person would be responsible for that portion of the bill. And it's pretty clear. It was signed by the selectman back in May 5th of 2009. So I don't know how many of you have actually read this. I mean, it's an old, it's an old policy, 90 years old. But it's certainly time to bring it to light in light of where we are with the legal budget. So I, I'm not convinced that a whole lot of abuse has taken place. Certainly some, but one of the options we could do is call the attorney and have them break down the hour by hour on the bill, but then that's going to cost you some money as well. They're going to send, they're going to charge you $200 an hour for any time you call. And it's broken down in increments of half hour, 15 minutes, whatever. So I think it's time to deal with it. The board has a couple of auctions. And I think if you read the policy, you can see pretty clearly what they are. So we've got April, May, and June left in the, you know, and I personally have always used, in the town of Mexico, we raised $5,000 for legal fees because we primarily use main municipal attorneys, you know, because at Memphis, we can call them and get advice. You know, they won't, they won't go to court with you or they won't, you know, write up an agreement or a contract, but they will give you advice and then you use that advice to do, you know, to write the contract yourself or a policy or an ordinance or those kind of things. So I think that's where we are. We could, you know, there's still probably, you know, take a few days and try to do some more research if you think it's necessary. But I really, just, just the last bill is the one that's really questionable.
Yeah, we had a selectman leave in the month of March or move, so there were some legal questions as to when that would take effect regarding that. And I honestly haven't seen this policy before.
What's that?
I hadn't seen, I hadn't seen this or read this policy before, so.
It's pretty clear.
Just a second. And I don't think we get the legal bill every month.
You would when you signed the warrant. It would be on there. I mean, you have to sign the warrant before we can pay the bill such that you're all the same. So I bet they're listed with all the other bills. I don't know whether you actually read every line item on them to see what's what, you know?
Well, the problem is that nobody is supposed to get in touch with the town attorney unless the Board of Selectmen says so.
Or the town.
Except for the town manager, who then obviously is stuff we don't even deal with. But that's the problem.
I think there've been matters discussed in executive session that we just didn't come out and take a vote on, not realizing that, you know? So it was just, yeah, a couple of matters.
Yep. We can do that.
Yeah, Larry?
The disturbing part of this whole conversation is the way that your firm is billing. Have you seen the copies, the way they're doing it?
Yeah, and it's, yeah, I have.
It's unachievable to figure it out. What the cost is for it. It was like somebody just writes down, everybody picks up the phone. When I get a bill from the same firm, it says one hour and 10 minutes. My time, $342 an hour. Four hours for my lady, $125 an hour. $1,656 for the four hours. I don't know why they're not doing it that way because this is not all Steve's language here. He's, a lot of this is happening through Christie or somebody.
Yeah, he's got a, an associate.
I can't imagine him paying this bill without questioning it. And they used to be. I mean, I've seen them over the years. They used to have broken out in 20 minutes. Donnie, I've got a year and a half of them. $400. None of them are broken down. Oh. And we paid $53,000. Somewhere along the line, they changed the way they were doing the billing. So it seems to actually have been a curfew. Something had broken down for that kind of way. Can you find out how much it would cost to break it all down?
Yeah, I've got all the way back to, it looks like July of '17, June of '17. None of them are broken down. And all the ones for this year.
I mean, how are they charging us if they're not breaking it down?
They list the dates. So for instance, this one, 8/03/17, review and prepare correspondence, prepare correspondence.
But no time on it.
Review and prepare correspondence in her office correspondence, no time on each one of them. And then the total bill for that was $425.
And typically, I think, I think, yeah, Larry, you're right. There's even a special software that attorneys use to time their conversations.
They do discuss the subject base, whether it's you speaking or him speaking or Tim speaking or what the subject was for, but there's no breakdown. So I don't know how. I mean, it disturbs me that we raised $35,000 for a conflict on the cement plant and we spent all of that money without going to the cement plant. That still hasn't even come up yet. There's only two hours of discussion about the cement plant all year.
What's that? Yeah, there are two attorneys involved with the, yeah, with the cement plant piece because, you know, they.
But we raised another $50,000 this year because we could see that we were in trouble. That's twice our typical raise. So now we spent $100,000 on something that we didn't get to the root of yet. We've delivered some arguments.
It's, it's in Superior Court waiting for a judge's decision, but yeah, everything leading up to that.
Between now and July 1st, we're out of.
I have a question. The $53,000, is that just for pretty clarity or does that include the separate lawyer for the cement plant?
Well, I'm not sure because it lists who the attorney was and then just initial, S-E-F-L. Who was that?
Steve Lindstrom.
All right. And then you've got KJ, A.T.S., KMC.
That's all for one firm.
These are all pretty flattery.
And there's a separate lawyer for the concrete plant, which makes Larry's case even worse.
But, but when I looked at the printout on all the accounts that have been spent through April, it was $54,000 total, total salaries.
Oh, okay.
So that wouldn't, and that wouldn't include this last bill of $3,100.
That's where you got my $58.
And, and so you said one of those was a bill from?
One is June for $3,362. So that, the auditor can really, you know, make an adjustment to put that to last year and then it takes away from you. It's unbalanced.
But there was no breakdown of what the $3,300 was.
On the June one? June, I think I did see June. Yeah, the July 12th bill is the dates all through. They had June 13, 14, 15, 16, 19, 20, 21, 26, 29, and 30. So all of, all those for the month could be allocated to the last year budget.
Okay.
So you're not really that, I mean, you're over, but this could be $3,300 worth of what it is today. And we don't know yet what we may be billed for what may have happened in May already.
We don't know what's happening.
So I haven't called the attorney and I certainly wasn't going to call him and see if he could break this out because I know that's going to be additional costs.
Technically, they should do it for nothing because they should be billing us.
One conversation, one, one conversation at a time. Go ahead, Dave.
Technically, they should be doing this for free because you don't send an invoice out without any accounting on it.
Especially when you're charged by the hour.
Steve, you had your hand up?
Yes, sometime, thank you. I can add a little clarity to this thing because I also have asked for all of this data and have reviewed it. The attorney instructed Tim Kellerman to only give me, under the Freedom of Information Act, relevant material to any specific court or lawyer dealings. And all they were going to do was to tell me that these emails were for this review for the airport as an example. They were redacting everything that had anybody's name in it. Mr. Kellerman did ask for an itemized breakdown of this thing. He was instructed he could get it. I didn't need that. And I don't know what Larry asked for in his Freedom of Information request. My, my problem was and still is, and by the way, quote, "I brought to you the, the May 2009 policy that states," signed by Donnie Nodle, "it was in your packets at one point in the last two months."
No.
Well, I'm not going to suggest that you got there. I know that that's what I had requested. What Tim did, and I'm not throwing anybody under the bus, I am going to tell you what I found out and why I. and why I went to find out, okay? I know when I served on this board, nobody on the board called a lawyer unless there was a vote, that there was, excuse me, a, a motion, a vote, and an approval from the board with a majority. You haven't, you never made a phone call. We never did. It was, as you suggested and clearly point out, rightly so, that it's the law, that's the town manager's job to maintain the budget in, in all of the different departments. So I'm a little curious. I had also asked from this board here, your email list, and I've got no response. And I know that request came to you all, because Tim assured me. And if he didn't? He didn't, but I did ask. Because there are a number of email traffics that have gone on between boards that also cost money. So it's not just the cement plant that has jacked this price up. There are a number of other things. And again, not throwing anybody under the bus, I wish Tim was here and we had an opportunity to talk about this prior to his departure, because I asked quite a bit of time before he left. But I had this opportunity to look over it just about a week. About the same for you, Larry?
Yeah, I asked for it, broken down by, you may have asked it, maybe that I did, I can't remember the word I used, but.
But they wouldn't break it down for us because of sensitivity in specific cases, et cetera, et cetera.
We, we're, we're not aware, so.
I think we beat this horse to death, but I think it's something we need to spend a lot of time on. But at the same time, we all gotta be aware of the policy. We gotta be aware of our responsibilities. And we gotta know who's, who is supposed to be directed, these questions are supposed to be directed to. And I think it's a lot of.
No, this is, yeah, it's a policy I hadn't seen or read before.
It's happened in our packet at least three times in the last year.
No, it hasn't. And nor has, yeah, and we've been remiss with coming out of executive session to vote. You know, we may have discussed our.
Thank you. You talked about it, you know, I feel.
Yeah.
It's a lot of it. Fifty-eight thousand dollars and we've got ninety days left to go. I'm concerned about that.
Yeah, exactly.
May I make one more comment, please?
Absolutely.
I, I believe that the, the biggest thing that this board and any future board needs to take away from tonight is exactly what our current town manager said, is we need to utilize MMA. And recognize that that resource is there for you to make a qualified, educated decision based upon legal counsel as opposed to thinking we can hang our hat on Freddie Flaherty every time. We think there's a potential issue in the future.
We do use MMA quite a bit.
I know you do. I know you do. Please, Donnie, don't go away thinking that I'll point things.
Oh, no, 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 I'm just saying that sometimes we use MMA and sometimes we use Langsdorf, depending on what it is.
Yeah, and sometimes they've disagreed. MMA and our, and Langsdorf, if Tim has felt the need to, for checks, you know, to double check things. So.
You need to start following policies. Anyway.
All right.
Anyway, thank you.
Yeah, Shelley?
What, what I have to do each year at the bank, I have to take certain classes in order to be able to do them. So maybe an idea is that you have an authorization and what you do is you sign it each year that, that you sign and you recognize the policy. Just an idea.
Thought we did that already.
For ethics.
Ethics. That was the only one. We did a lot more than that on the budget and.
As far as signing off and training, it's, it's the, it's the code of ethics.
No, it was another, again, I, I could get a copy of it. She spent quite a bit of time working on it, what we're supposed to go remember and recite. Like the three people in a crowd, the three people's a crowd of any one board. What you can say, what you can't say publicly, how approach this board and any other board and how I'm not the budget committee tonight, I'm like who? I wasn't appointed to speak for the budget committee. So I've not done that. At least that's the, it was quite a session being. That lady, I believe. It was an hour plus session.
Yeah, that was called the code of ethics. Yeah, we all have it.
If you could kind of find out if they're willing to do this for free, obviously, would be good. And they should. How, how do they know, how do we know what we're paying for?
Exactly, and it would be, you know, sometimes it's nice to know how much is going to the park project, how much is going to the airport, how much is it costing us for the, that plant. I mean, that all should have been broken down. So you know exactly what each angle is costing.
They should.
I mean, and on bond council, you know, bond, that's part of the, that's part of the bond financing and part of that project, I mean, those costs can be allocated to that subject as well. So I mean, if you get into a situation where you're overdrawn, if everything goes into the legal fees across the board, that's where you're gonna run into trouble, whereas if you allocate those to the different projects, those are all legitimate accounting.
That's true. You just work it in.
Yeah, so you really kind of need that. So I, I guess the main thing I need from the board tonight is, whether or not you wanna send that check? For March's bill, or do you wanna wait till the next meeting and I'll talk to them and see if we can give them the breakdown of at least the last bill, because that's the one that's.
Shelley's got it.
I just have one request, is that if something happens and it is a personnel matter, that it doesn't like list any information about, it just, maybe just say it's a personnel matter?
They would break it down that way.
Okay, 'cause I don't, I just want, yeah, I just wanna make sure that it's public.
The only thing they would do different is say a half an hour on this subject or twenty minutes or an hour. That's the only difference. But, but, you know, here's one here on concerning Gomez property. Another one, a code enforcement issue. I mean, there's a lot of legitimate issues. Most of the, vast majority are legitimate issues, so. And some even, even the ones that you had to call, you probably, some of them are legitimate issues.
But prior to April of this past year, someone from this office contacted the attorney every business day for something.
That's a big bill, that last bill.
Every business day. If that's correct, is it even bill probably?
I don't know, I mean, the, the town manager would, would know.
That just seems like a awful lot.
Town manager would know there. All right, any other public to speak on a non-agenda item? Yes, Mark.
Mark Borga. And on March fifteenth, which is eight or nine weeks ago now, I submitted, I filed a complaint with the board of selectmen, and I haven't heard anything. And the reason I filed that complaint is because I felt some type of action was warranted. And I thought I'd hear something by now. And so I don't really know what the status is, but I have an, an expectation that you folks will communicate with me at some point in time. And I'm open to any way you wanna communicate, you know, if I need to go to an executive session or whatever. That, that's fine. But at the same time, in light of this legal discussion there and the cost of that and all of that, seeing as the town radio is fortunate enough to have a town manager with a lot of experience, I would like to suggest that you consult with him in this matter, you know, and not, you know, and see that, you know, maybe it's quite possible that no legal costs are necessary to see this through. Thank you.
I'm not familiar with the complaint.
Right, but maybe the board of selectmen will consult with you now that, because I think eight to nine weeks is too long to not hear anything.
Did we hand it over to Annalise?
I think we, we did, yeah, Donnie asked, didn't we hand that over to Annalise, who's our HR consultant? We did. So we, we have a meeting with her Wednesday. And we can, we can ask her tonight. We've got an executive session with her tonight. We can see if she's done anything with it. Mark, is that, sorry, I mean, we, yeah. Sorry about that.
We'll find out.
Yeah. And we can certainly, you know, if Annalise has a copy, she can share that with, with John. Any other public to speak on a non-agenda item? Boards and committees, any board committees present that wish to share information? Moving on to consent items, the special amusement permits that were just reviewed in, at the public hearing. Tricia, can we make a general acceptance of and list off all of the public?
I'm pretty sure that's what you did the last year, Tim.
Okay, all right.
Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the special amusement permits for Forty-Fifth Parallel, Ranger of the Friends of the Arts, The Shed, Moose Alley, thank you, Langley Hospitality Inc., Doing Businesses, Range Lee Inn, Gingerbread LLC, Loon Lodge, Mountain Star States LLC, Forks in the Air, Ball Mountain Camps, Country Club Inn, MSPNG Inc., Doing Businesses, Sarge's Sports Park and Grub, and Parkside Inn Maine.
Donnie's motion.
Second.
And Shelley's seconds. Any questions, comments?
Can we just maybe make sure they have a copy of the noise ordinance if they're gonna have outside entertainment? So we can follow the, the shut offs.
Just don't have it memorized. All right, any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Next, we have a liquor license renewal from Loon Lodge Inn.
Make a motion to accept the liquor license for Loon Lodge Inc.
Second.
Questions, comments? All those in favor? And that's unanimous.
Question.
And next, we have a liquor license renewal from the Country Club Inn.
Make a motion to accept the liquor license for the Country Club Inn.
Second.
Questions, comments? All those in favor? And that's unanimous. Next, we have an event comment application for a parade down Main Street. This is the Range Lee Rotary Children's Day Parade, scheduled for Tuesday, July third at nine AM.
Make a motion to accept the event comment application for the Range Lee Rotary for the Children's Day Parade, to take place on Tuesday, July third, rain date set for Wednesday, July fourth, from nine AM to eleven AM.
Seven.
Questions, comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous. Next, we have.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. No, thank you.
I can calm down.
Oh, you have to stay.
You didn't read the fine print, did you?
Next is an application for vendor's license. This is a renewal for the farmer's market. And we've got Karen Seaman and Dan Alec who have applied, business name is Blueberry Hill Farm, Thursdays from ten to two PM, at the vacant lot in the corner of Main and Pleasant Street. The lot is owned by Dan Alec.
Make a motion to accept the application for vendor's license for the Blueberry Hill Farm on Thursdays from ten to two PM.
Second. You have a question?
Yes.
For Karen. I see you've got handcrafted crafts. Does that include the, the clothing, the jewelry, the furniture, artwork, and pottery?
No, listen, anything that anybody could possibly sell there, just to avoid any kind of conflict.
So my, my, are the clothes?
Handcrafted items, if I was to spell out every single handcrafted item.
I understand that, but are the, are the clothes, used clothes, or they something, something somebody made or?
Um, it was Katie Emerson's small business, but I don't believe she's gonna join us this year.
Okay, cool.
Any other questions for Karen? All those in favor? Next is a application for Cantrell Seafood. And it's to be held on a site-specific property, looks like Town and Lake Motel, on Wednesdays and Saturdays, occasional Sunday, holiday, you know, for the holiday weekend.
Can we just give a permit to seafood for these exact same dates? Like, whatever it's also, we did.
High tide, low tide, is it for those?
This is a different one.
It is.
It was a renewal approved last time. That was one of Alice's.
Yeah, the last one was at Alice's, you're right.
Yeah, the last one was a renewal.
What days was the renewal?
Thursdays and Saturdays.
Saturday.
So we would have two on, on a Saturday?
And Wednesday, and a holiday.
No, the other guy's Thursday.
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 About a chair?
Yes.
I wanna try to pose this correctly, so it doesn't seem like I'm against business, 'cause I am not. But it bothers me a tiny bit, not enough to make a big stink, but a tiny bit that we're allowing vendors to come in and peel the cream off from businesses that already provide this service. And now you're having two of the same seafood, if you will, taking away from, not that it's probably gonna impact him at all, the IGA, but it might have cost a grocery. And it might be lobster pound at Forty-Fifth Parallel. I just think they might, you might wanna think about that as we start handing out these sorts of permits that are taking away from people who pay taxes year round. Just a thought, throw it out there.
Plus, they're within almost sight of each other. Mark.
No.
Brain fart.
Mark.
I think it was just last year that you folks went through a whole new rate schedule for these types of permits, so that, and priced them so that it would be fairer to existing businesses and still provide a service and also to let competition be present to among these different types of vendors. They had to give the public choices so that, and that's why you went through this big rate increase and things and supposedly it was gonna take care of the questions like Steve brought up. And, you know, I don't think we've had a season to let it play out and see how it's worked yet.
Yeah, we, yeah, we did redo our vendors.
Last year?
Yeah. I don't think we were allowed to go as high as we, you know, was, we wanted to with our vendors fees because it was deemed discriminatory, but, you know, we, we went as high as was legally allowed just to, just in light of, you know, folks, existing businesses that pay property taxes, that hire people, et cetera. This is the first time we've gotten a vendor's permit where, you know, they're, they're offering the same product for sale on an identical day. Can we, I mean, we're, we already have one for Saturday, do we, I mean, do we have to take this at face value? Or should we kick it back and just say, look, we already have a vendor, or, I mean, it's, Bethna?
Sorry, I'm gonna bring up, this has come up before. And there's no language in your vendor's ordinance that allows you to pick and choose. So you're being discriminatory, discriminatory by denying one while you approved another.
Yeah, and I don't, yeah.
I, I, in good conscience, we have a permit, you fill out a permit, you apply for it. We can't discriminate against who's coming, if there's two coming. There's a lot of opportunities where there potentially could be more than one vendor. The art show has a hundred vendors, and they all are selling arts. So I think we're, we're on slippery slope here if we try and say, you can come in, but you can't.
That's a good point, Dave. All right.
Good, great differentiation, though.
Motion.
I make a motion to accept the application for vendor's license for Andy Cantrell, Cantrell Seafood, to be on Wednesdays and Saturdays for the occasional holidays, Sunday, at Town and Lake Motel.
Second.
Shaw's motion and Dave's seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor? And those opposed? Or that was opposed, Donnie? Okay, so it's three one. Next up, we've got a memo from the Franklin County Commissioners. And this is the 2018-19 unorganized township service contracts for fire rescue services. This includes Davis Township, Stetson, Seven Ponds, letter D, letter E, Reddington, and Langtown, a portion of Langtown.
Make a motion to accept the structural fire protection inter-local cooperation with Davis Township, Stetson, Seven Ponds, letter D, letter E, Reddington, and Langtown.
MO. So we need a MO?
Four. Twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
Second.
Sure to say from July 1st, 2018, to June 30th, 2019.
Sound an amendment?
Yes.
Shelley, amend her motion to include July 1st, 2018, to June 30th, 19?
Second.
Questions, comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous. Next is the same thing, except for solid waste. It's entitled Solid Waste Inter-Local Cooperation, in the amount of fourteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Make a motion to accept the solid waste interlocal cooperation for Davis, Stetson, Seven Ponds, letter D, letter E, Reddington, and Langtown Township, in the amount of fourteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars, from July 1st, 2018, to June 30th, 2019.
Second.
Questions, comments? All those in favor? And that's unanimous. And then we've got, lastly, under consent items, a memo regarding Reed and Reed Trailer Parking for the Depot Street location. And this simply states this letter is to serve as written verification of the municipal officer's approval of Reed and Reed erecting a telephone pole for electrical and internet services in the park, public parking lot located on Depot Street and Rangeli while they perform work on Hunter Cove Bridge over the summer of 2018. Pardon?
Just wanna add, probably slight revision, I probably should've thought before, Reed Reed's actually working in conjunction with DOT, especially if it's an MDOT trailer, just for clarification.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the trailer at the Depot Street Parking Lot for Hunter Cove Bridge.
Dave's motion?
Second.
And Donnie's second. Any other questions or comments? Clarifications? All those in favor? That's it for Section Six Consent Items. Moving on to correspondence, we've got a thank you to Chief French from Heather Turner. And she writes, "On behalf of my mom and myself, I'd like to thank Chief French. My dad passed away last Tuesday at our family camp in Rangeli. Chief French was there from start to finish. He talked with me on the phone while I was on my way to be with my mom, and he stayed with her the whole time. When I arrived, he greeted me with a big warm hug and sweet encouraging words. He actually offered to have his officers come and finish our raking. He helped us carry my dad in a dignified weight onto a stretcher brought by the funeral home, and was seriously a huge comfort for us all. He stayed, he literally stayed all day, way above, above and beyond his call of duty. I'm personally very touched by his kindness and genuine love for people. I can't say enough about this man. We are forever grateful and touched by what he did. There is no way to ever repay his kindness. Absolutely the most awesome cop we've ever met. God forbid anything ever happened to this, to this beautiful soul, but if it does, we will certainly be first in line to do anything for his family. Thank you so much." Wow. And then lastly, under correspondence, we have an invitation from the Rangeli Friends of the Arts to attend their first run movies at the theater, and that is, it's a ribbon cutting ceremony on Friday, May 25th, at five PM. Which is great for the community.
Four thirty-five.
Four thirty to five, sorry. Moving on to old business, is there any updates with the downtown revitalization plan? We do have a meeting that Wright Pierce is holding at the school on the 30th. Public just encouraged to attend. And the Shore Road Guard Rail update, I, did you have something regarding that, John?
Yes, actually, Keith put it in his report. He did talk to Mark Hume, and Mark Hume said that he rethought, you know, whatever he might have told to the woman who would have talked to him, but he didn't have any objection that a town putting a barricade if the town wanted to, so. Passing the buck. But if Keith actually talked to him, so maybe he can fill you in on more details than that and see if you wanna do any further.
Okay.
Just to simplify that, Mark had acknowledged to me that he had retract his confirmation of the permanent rail system he put in place, that indeed, if the town wanted to put a temporary structure in place, that he would allow that. That's where it was last. I had asked for written documentation, done for him, I heard from him.
And you'll forward that to...
I will forward that.
To the person making the request?
I am the person making the request.
Oh, okay.
I wanna explain something about this guardrail situation, and why I feel it's imminent that it gets done, because as you and I have talked, they're already starting to zip through and do their little games down there. It's in a corner where people who live on Shore Drive come walking with their kids, riding the bikes, what have you, and the zipping of the car going through this area is gonna clip one of these kids sooner or later. This is a section that is not plowed, so therefore it has no need for emergency vehicles. Fifty feet from this area up the road is another section that is wide open, much wider if a vehicle needed to get in there. It's approximately two hundred feet from the entrance of Shore Road. It is an accident waiting to be happening, and I've been at this since October of last year, as Keith is aware, trying to get somebody to come to a decision. I started with Joe, and then I went, then you got shoved into the mix, and then I ended up at the Dixfield office, and Mark Hume, and George Grossman, and Jeff Quinby. Everybody has passed it around, and it's back in Keesley. So I'd like to see this done sooner than later, because it is going to be an issue at some point. Someone's gonna die on that corner, and they zip there, through there like there's no tomorrow.
Yep, Dave.
Is there any way you could put like a natural speed bump there, so if people couldn't...
Can we just take several speed bumps?
You know, like a little dirt, a little dirt berm that people have to go over if they're gonna go there, and that is gonna definitely slow them down? Because you can just kinda make the turn at like fifty and beat the traffic around the corner.
I wonder, but obviously with the legality of not putting kind of signage up, that would indicate some kind of obstruction to the real estate at that point. Obviously, hold self-accountable if you just something naturally appears, and obviously somebody has to hold accountable for that event, if that did happen, or it was, the chances of something happening were increased because we put something in place that wasn't properly advertised, or just for...
Sorry. Can I ask you, Keith and I have discussed this at length, that if it's not done sooner versus later, and it isn't done in an appropriate manner where the townspeople are aware before the travelers get in here, we're still gonna have an issue down there. When I spoke with Joe, there was a thought of bringing in two large boulders. This is not a wide opening. It's not something that, for, I don't take my truck through it too often, because you could clip the tree or the guardrail if you're not paying attention to what you're doing, but it's wide enough that the little zippy cars that are going through there, go through there at such a speed, you hear them hit the highway. And you, last year, when the squealing went on at ten o'clock at night, and I looked out my window, and you could see that there was a confusion of who was going to get out, I said, that's enough, we've gotta do something about this. Because it is, has been an ongoing issue for years.
What we talked about at the last meeting was, well, first of all, it was, you know, there was more information sought from DOT, but was holding a public hearing, because we would need, not just you, but we need other feedback from property owners, you know, down in that area, as far as, you know, a general consensus of what, what folks would agree on, for a barrier, whether it be natural or permanent.
What about go-through traffic?
We had that sign. Or we had, we had a sign that said, no through traffic. It disappeared, not once, but three times.
Okay.
I'm thinking of those big yellow corner markers that like point you around the corner.
See, now, I like that idea, because it's reflective, and everybody will see it. The problem with all of this is, I tried to go through the town appropriately in the way it should. Unlike some other things that go on in town, people just do what they want, and then they won't worry about it later. So as I address this to you, I think we need to hurry up and get this done.
I think one concern that someone mentioned last time was that if you take that away, you may have a lot more traffic along the whole length of Shore Road, so that's why they said that we probably should have a public hearing with all the residents on Shore Road to see what the feeling was amongst everyone.
And David, I agree with you to a point, but I can pretty much point out the cars in town that are doing this, and it's, it's down to five.
Is it, it's not people that live on the road, though?
No.
What if you put a sign up that says, local only? Local traffic only?
Here's the problem with that. You were once a teenage boy, I was once a teenage girl.
Long time.
How often do, well, speak for yourself. How often do we follow the rules when you see a sign up there?
Donnie always followed the rules.
I'm sure he did.
My whole life.
I think it has to be a permanent determinant, and I do understand that you need to speak with other people on the road, and because most everyone on that road is not a permanent resident, is it going to make a difference if you hold a meeting or not? Because most of us on Shore Road are, this is our second homes, this is the road that we help with our tax money to maintain and to be safe, and there's a lot of rental property on that road as well. So yours, it's, I understand where you're coming from, it's a double-edged sword, but that one little section needs to be cut off. If someone wants to use that road, go fifty more feet and go through the wider part, where you actually have to stop, turn, and look. And as, with some of the conversation with the gentleman I have talked to, when someone's zipping through that little corner, he's looking over this side of his shoulder, not this way, and he's gonna get clipped sooner or later. And it's just a race, and I know it's teenagers or young, young men that are doing it, except for one young lady. And I know it's just a game, it's a race, and it's what they do, but it's gonna cost somebody a life.
Well, now that we know it's not something that DOT is willing to, you know, willing to handle, be, you know, a part of, then I think what Keith had mentioned is finding out what, what the town can do with the least amount of liability. We do need, we do need to hold a public hearing, we can hold it down the Aquasic Fire Station to get public feedback, so folks can't, you know, everyone has equal opportunity to understand what's going on, what their options are, what are non-options, et cetera. So we can, we can schedule, we can schedule that.
We could hold a meeting in the closet.
Yeah, that's, yeah, at the fire station.
I mean, a regular meeting.
That's true.
So now, let me ask a question about this. So because there was no meeting when the snowmobile trail got moved, which there should have been, if no one shows up to this meeting about the guardrail, are you gonna interpret that as nobody has any interest, or no one has any opposition?
Nobody has any, I mean, they don't care what happens, you know, I mean, basically...
So would you move forward if, if there's myself and one other person?
As long, yeah, I mean, as long as, as long as the residents of Shore Road get notified, they have the option to attend or not attend. This is the meeting, we wanna hear your feedback. Yeah, I mean, that's...
So, you're...
We, I guess, I guess we don't need, we don't need a certain number of people present in order to take action.
Okay, and it's, so if it's just me, and the noise that show up and say, yes, we want this, are you gonna move forward to make an effort to block this?
Yeah, yes, I mean, it's, if that's, I mean, basically, it's just a matter of getting feedback and giving Keith the amount of time he needs.
And he needs to do his research.
Yeah, yeah. So, and anyone who's in opposition, you know, for them to attend.
Yeah, and the reason I ask this question is, my concern is, because it's all second homeowner, well, shouldn't be all, but the majority of the homeowners on that are second, this is their second home, so most of the time, people aren't up, except for when it's seventy-six and bombing, you know?
Yeah, right.
I could encourage you to have any of the second homeowners email letters of support or whatever, to my email address, if you want that. That's how we handle the ATV public hearing.
That's right.
Lots of written opinion, so it's, even if they can't attend a meeting, they can still communicate their stance.
We could do it a second meeting in June, which most people are up here by then.
Yeah, that's, that's true. Yeah, Shelley.
So the other thing I would have to say is that it would definitely have to be in the budget. I mean, I would say we have to make sure we have the money to do that, and what the liability is of closing that off.
And once again, it's not plowed in the wintertime, so therefore it's not an emergency access. I watched what goes on with the few town trucks that go down there, and second entrance isn't ever used, but that is left open. So I don't, I don't know if there's, why there would not be a reason to close it, because like I said, fifty feet away is much wider interest, and I have seen the town trucks use that entrance.
So Dave made a good suggestion that we, you know, could hold our regular select meetings in Aquasic, second meeting in June. It gives Keith enough time, hopefully, I know you're really busy, Keith, to...
I'll, I'll make the work.
Okay. So we'll hold our second meeting, well, let's just find the date.
Eighteenth.
Okay, so June 18th. We can start at five-thirty, hold a half-hour public hearing, prime to our regular meeting.
At the firehouse?
Yeah, at the firehouse.
Maybe it'll only take five minutes?
Maybe, very well could, it depends on who's there.
I know, I know.
You know, it's, it's up to you guys, what you've got to say, and like Tracy said, if you know of any homeowners that have an opinion, that wanna voice it but can't be there, have them email Tracy.
Okay.
And wouldn't we have to get everyone's permission on there anyways, like if we were to close a road?
You just have to notify them.
That, that doesn't look like a road to me, it looks like people just started using it, and it kinda looks like a driveway entrance, but I don't think it's a road. The road is Shore Road.
It, it is not considered according to State of Maine, a road, for an entrance to a road.
But we pay to maintain it?
We don't plow it, we don't plow it.
We don't follow, we don't agree, anything. It's just a, an opening.
Opening with a right away.
It's a shortcut.
A homemade road.
Absolutely.
Okay. Are you good with that?
Yes, I'm good with that.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. That's it, under old business, moving on to new business. We had Chris Lynch present at our last meeting, and he handed out this broadband proposal from his company, Matrix Design Group. And he said he had also shared it with Charlie Woodworth, Laura's familiar with, at the Franklin County Development, Economic Development Group. And at this point, it's just information.
Very expensive.
It's very expensive.
Yeah. Just so everybody knows, they want to do this out of the town, $1.375 million.
Any provisions to that?
That's what it says.
It's really, I mean, you know, I mean, Laura and, and Shelley and Dave, who are part of the Economic Development Group and have been, you know, in the know for quite a while, it's still kind of in its infancy, isn't it, Laura? I mean, it's basically this Franklin County, this Charlie Woodworth, who's the president, he's, you know, all the towns in Franklin County are, have a vested interest in improving, you know, the internet throughout Franklin County. And he is kind of taking all the information, all the proposals, and filtering through, you know, what will work for, what might be great for Rangelley, might not be what Rangelley Plantation wants. I mean, it really is a town-by-town basis. But what Chris said, what Chris Lynch said was that, you know, if Rangelley Plantation wanted services, it would have to start in the town of Rangelley first. So, in some ways, we're separate, but in other ways, we may find that we, you know, have to be the starting point for others. So, he wanted to be first in line, and so, this is, this is our initial pricing package.
He's first in line for you, but not for the county?
Not for the county, that's right, that's right. So, so we'll just stay tuned there. There was supposed to be a bond, but...
And I was just gonna say, just the state is very concerned about, you know, go-forward internet in rural Maine. So, I would be surprised if they didn't come up with support for a bond to help. So, I would wait till the next legislature, because they're all done till January, and I would think sometime next year, they might actually be able to act on a bond.
Okay.
There's a lot of, lot of support for it, from what I've seen this year.
Also, in this one, I see there's stuff in here that each person's gonna have to shell out $400 if they're hooked up. And it's $95 a month minimum. So, throwing it out there.
Yeah. Larry?
I thought Bolacci passed a bill that said all rural Maine will have adequate internet and cell phone service. That was nine years ago.
Define adequate.
Is still working on it, isn't it?
I smoked that all of the news.
Oh, yeah, I know.
We're trying to find it out.
I live on New York, those two subjects. They have a campground in the closet.
They, you know, Charlie did, you know, of Greater Franklin Development Council did touch on that, that, you know, yeah, there's, you know, there was supposed to be a minimum amount of service provided. But once they met that threshold... And they choose the most dense areas to, to deal with first. And even though there's FCC funds for it, they don't have to.
You think UPS wants to go to Jackson? No.
But it's, there were enough, there were enough loopholes. Yeah. They'd love to hold their feet to the fire. I mean, he was very, you know, Charlie Wood, very informative and, but there's just no obligation.
But I do remember Bolacci signed a bill that said rural Maine, we need to cover if we both sell an internet. And whatever happened without it?
Yeah, they've fulfilled their minimum obligation, is what's happened. Mark?
I think that was something he called the three-ring binder thing there, and identified a few areas that they were gonna get initiated. But I believe that was mismanaged, and the money kinda dissipated before very much got out.
Actually, that still exists.
It does.
That three-ring binder, they actually, they followed through with that.
I think it's mostly in the mid-coast.
It goes through Farmington, Rosas ago.
Goes all the way up through. But Fairpoint was given money, have to funding to provide. That's actually why us out in the new plantation now have internet, because Fairpoint was forced to give it to us. And ironically, because we're the last ones in, we've actually got the best speed right now.
For you. So, this isn't an item that requires any action, it's just for information only, and we'll move on. Town manager report, actually, did I make a note? Nope, okay. So, John?
Yeah, I know a lot. It was a short week. I did give you information on all the border grant proposal that we put in. I gave you a copy of that actual proposal. I gave you a copy of what I received last week in Augusta when I went to that meeting. So, you can see exactly how, what I reported to you last week. This week, I'll be in, I won't be in tomorrow, but I'll be in Wednesday and Thursday. And I believe the following day is Memorial Day, so you're closed.
Right.
I'll be in that Tuesday, Wednesday. That's pretty much it. I did meet today with...
Derek Gally.
Gally. We did go down and review the progress at the park. Quite a nice plan you have going, and you can visualize how it's gonna look. It's gonna be very nice.
Lot of work.
Yeah, so, it looks like a great project for the town, for downtown. Well, it's pretty much it for me.
There is a notice of public hearing for the Franklin County budget. And this will be held in the Franklin County Superior courtroom on May 24th at 6:00 PM, if anyone is interested.
Chairman? Do we have a public hearing now, or are we planning for a period?
Yes, we do.
Same date and time.
Yeah. Yeah, we've got the, we do have our, our public hearing on the budget, May 24th at the school at 6:00 PM. And it's also an opportunity for nonprofits to give their, to give their information to the public and appeal for votes. Have, Trisha, have they've all been notified?
Yes.
They have, okay. And we've got the fire chief's proposed contract. Yes.
The 30th.
Oh, yes. The 30th, on May 30th at 6:00 PM is the public workshop for the downtown revitalization plan. That's at the school. And Wright Pierce has generated a lengthy feedback document that they're looking at from the public in regards to opinions and needs for downtown Rangelley and Aquasic Village. So, all are encouraged to attend. This is a extremely important project, and the more input, the better. Thank you, Donnie. We have the fire chief proposed contract. His start date is June 4th. And is this the corrected version?
The sample version. I didn't have it.
Oh, sorry, yeah. Okay. Yeah, I think there were just minor corrections, just pronouns, whatnot, that, okay.
I checked.
Pardon?
I checked the one that I have to bring.
Where we had the, the, we'd already voted on the initial contract. Do you need to follow through? Offerments?
Yeah.
And that's...
So, that's, yeah, that's all of it.
Okay.
So, I'll make a motion to approve the appointment agreement with the fire chief. Shut up.
Dave's motion and Donnie's second. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor? These are just summaries. Next, we have select board communication. And I guess I'd just like to come up with a orderly means to provide information at our, at our budget public hearing this Thursday. Donnie, this is for you. So, at one meeting, Donnie, Tim had handed out, this was, he consulted with Steve Leinsterf as to what are essential services. Because if any non-essential services are voted down in the budget, they do not get revisited. So, the essential government services are schools and education, roads and public works, land use and environmental protection, public safety and health, licensing, permitting, and economic regulations, and administration and general government. And I believe those have been asterisked in, in the warrant articles. So, we'll, at the, at the end of the, at the end of the expense article discussion, we'll have the nonprofits make their appeal to the public and share information as to why they, why they deserve, you know, want their vote to be supported financially for the 2018-19 year. So, as far as going through, I guess, the expense articles, it starts with the capital improvement and reserve accounts. I mean, we could go one by one, switching off. I mean, each, each expense article has its own, each expense has its own article. Or we could have one selectman attack, you know, a chunk. I think there are four chunks of information. Yeah, Shelley?
We have a sample ballot.
That's the name of one, there's one in your town.
Of how it's, it looks on the ballot?
There's one in the town. It's a sample.
Yeah, it says, yeah.
Okay. But I can print you out a separate one, can you?
Well, I don't know if people wanna hand out. Well, they can pick it up.
There'll be, there'll be the town reports for them to pick up. Yeah, Mark, then Larry.
Well, we'll evaluate that if everything were approved as presented, what impact it would have on...
I can't, I missed that first part of the question.
In the past, sometimes, they'd make a projection, you know, that if everything was passed as presented, the impact it would have on the, the tax rate and whatnot, you know, on the current conditions.
That has been, you're right, that has been presented before. And is that, is that something that can be made ready by Thursday?
Well...
I think the only thing would be the, if all the, I mean, because the budget committee and the selectmen all voted the same, so there wouldn't be a separate tally for that. So, it would be, I guess, the donation articles.
The way I always did it before is you really have to wait till year end to see what any balances are and how that impacts your fund balance. And so, in the towns I managed before, the towns would vote the budget. And then, once the year ended and we knew what the fund balance was, then we would have a special town meeting to allocate an amount of money from the fund balance to reduce the tax commitment. And the other thing that you probably don't know at this point is what your assessed value is. So, there's three parts of determining what your tax bill is. So, it's the assessment, it's the budget, and it's how much revenue that you have to reduce the tax commitment. So, you may do something different here as far as actually setting the tax rate. But in Mexico, I always did that in August, after the year ended a few months. And before, we printed that though. So, there's probably different ways people do that. So, I haven't really dealt with that yet here. Thank you.
Larry?
So, two things. First, could it be possible for me to get a copy of the required and unrequired expense for the town board to answer your question about, sorry, the essential, not essential?
Yes, actually, we should probably have, have these to hand out at the...
One's report, and see where we stand on that. The other thing is, I believe we have an article typically, John, that says, "All undesigned, not, it's more than the 90-day limit." I don't know if we've reached the level limit yet. I haven't spoken to Rebecca about our level limit yet. She's been getting, gonna get that for me, but she doesn't have it all down yet. I don't even see an honest way in there yet if we exceeded the level limit. Because last year, we made a mistake on the level limit, it wouldn't work yet. I just told everybody in the room that they were making a mistake, no one believed me. And then, in fact, the bigger day, they've increased it for one day, for that one season.
Yeah, they, some towns do it by how many months' budget. Some towns do it by a percentage of the budget, like 10%, or 15%.
Right, so they made a mistake in the article. So, if we've increased the level limit again, we have to go back to 17 to visit that number of 16 to see if we've gone above the level.
Yeah, I'd have to spend some time looking to that, Larry, see how you've done it.
We raised the level limit in 2017 or 18, one time. That means we have to go back and revisit 16 again, and only about 2.3%.
You're talking about the LD1 cap from 19 years ago.
We can only go 2.3%, we can't change this. And I'm not sure that's being looked at. Because incidentally, there's an article to fund the general account with any carryover money. It wasn't designated. That should be pretty close to being tabulated now.
Let me review those articles and see what I think.
You follow what I'm saying?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Sure.
Steve?
Yes, two things, thank you. Police, if you would take a look at your police line in, in your town report, you will find that the budget committee votes, recommends one number, board of selectmen recommends a different number.
Oh, that's right. They, they did vote to increase the fire chief, I'm sorry, the police chief's salary. That was the difference.
Correct, so there's no way in the private ballot to address this issue. Everything else is quid pro quo in terms of budget committee versus selectmen.
Correct.
That's my first issue or question, how you gonna resolve that? Secondly, in previous town meetings, when we had the ability on the floor to deal with specific issues, early on in each town meeting, there was a, a... specific issues, early on in each town meeting, there was a, a opportunity to take the previous year's fund balance, apply it to reduction of taxes, which is exactly what you're referring to, except no special town meeting, we would be able to do it. We still, we don't, we don't have the ability now to do that unless the Board of Selectmen includes that in the secret ballot as a, as a request to reduce taxation based upon a previous year's, the fund balance, if there was a surplus.
No, there wasn't last year.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. But we could do that.
It's in, in a prior year, when, and you're going to recall this, Larry, two years prior to that, it was voted on the floor to take...
To amend the article?
To amend the article.
Correct.
And, you know, to, to take surplus and towards the reduction of taxes, and that was wiped out by the assessor. So, it, with an increased...
If I'm correct, if police is essential, and the floor feels that the Police Chief deserves that $33,000, you would vote it down.
Right, and then...
And it would be another meeting on just that subject.
Exactly.
That's correct, but Mike and Larry is absolutely right. The issue still is, is does the voter understand this? Everybody in this room understands it, because we're all talking about it.
Absolutely not. That's how we ended up in the situation when we were in last year at town meeting.
So, it's, but yeah, that's, you know, we'll, we'll point that out on, on Thursday, and go from there.
See, I always thought, see, that it would be nice to have, if you're going to go referendum, the Budget Committee and the Selectmen, because each group spends a fair amount of time on the budget, and each group has a separate opinion, or different, sometimes the same, as to what we should or shouldn't fund. So, it would be so easy on the referendum, you want to vote for the Selectmen, you want to vote for the Budget Committee, or you want to vote it down at town?
It's...
Can I make a comment on that?
Yes, yeah.
They tried that in Rufford a few years ago.
Yeah.
And it does not work, because...
Too many options.
What you had, what they found out is that, I mean, they have a charter, so they could do this. State law says you can only have a yes or a no vote. You can't have three options on a vote, unless you have a charter, then you can do what you want. So, Rufford's charter did exactly that. They could vote the Selectmen's budget, Budget Committee's budget, or no. And what happened was all of these outside agencies, like you said, that, once they voted down, they don't have a second chance. You wound up with some people voting for the Selectmen and some voting for the Finance Committee, so that the vast majority of the people wanted to vote to support, like the Greater Rufford Community Center, right, or Black Mountain, you know, two-thirds, 70%, 80% of votes for the money, but it failed, and they didn't have a second chance. So, a lot of those agencies didn't get funded, because, because you see how that was split?
I do, but...
So, then, then they tried something different, and that didn't really work. And you know what they finally came up with? Another charter amendment that put the, they made the Finance Committee elected, and now they have the Selectmen and five elected Finance Committee members are the Finance Committee, period. So, they go in with one recommendation.
That's the only problem that constantly happens.
Like a six to four vote of the newly created Finance Committee.
That's the only problem that I've had in this referendum vote, is for the last 50 years, we've had an opportunity to amend an article on the floor and not go back to another hearing on that particular article. You might determine that you'd like to buy a new pickup for Public Works and take it out of the Capital Reserve instead of taking it and raise, instead of raising it. We could amend an article on the floor to buy that pickup out of Capital Reserve in the past, and not have to raise the money this year and save X amount of dollars. Now, the public does not even understand what they're looking at, unless they put their arms around this budget and spend 100 days on it like a lot of us do.
Rufford has a secret ballot.
Yes, and they have like seven pages of...
But you understand what I'm saying?
Take an hour to go in there and vote.
But we used to have an opportunity to make corrections on the floor.
And that, that's what you give up?
Right.
Your rights to amend, to ask questions, because guess what? Not a lot of people bother going to the public.
Right.
No, no, town meeting had, you know, declined as well.
And it's the same six people speaking, and that was the problem that we, we, I didn't feel that way, because I'm certainly not afraid to get up in the crowd, but many people said they were afraid to stand up and speak their mind on a particular fire, personnel, or whatever issue, they were afraid to say, you know, "I don't think we should be giving John $100,000 a year. I think you should be giving 63, like I make, or 28." Well, they were afraid to stand up and say that, so that's where, how we witnessed referendum, right?
Yeah, yeah, people, people weren't willing to come and speak.
The same people that are willing to stand up, because we've been in this room every night, every Monday night.
Well, you have 60 people still.
Mark has his hand up.
I'd just like to mention that I think it's still incumbent on the town to continue their educational campaign on this, and, you know, this will be the second year, and that we should really beef up the efforts to inform the public in newspaper articles, you know, these Selectmen's meetings, Finance meetings, you know, Town meetings, you know, they're just not that well attended. People are getting most of their information, you know, from the local newspaper, the Southern Journal, the Irregular, Highlander, Mountain Messenger, and the town's webpage. So, I think we should continue a strong effort to educate the residents of town about these matters.
Yes.
Who do we have reporting to all of those periodicals that Mark just mentioned? Anybody?
We've got a representative from the Highlander here, and...
Oh, good. Thank you.
Hi.
I didn't realize it. I know they haven't been for a few meetings, so I should, I was curious, but thank you.
Yeah.
Well, plus, they didn't count last year. We had town, the vote and everything, never made it even in the paper. Granted, the paper comes out every two weeks, but still, people might want to know what actually happened with the vote, and not just hear it on the street.
Tricia takes care of that.
I mean, I sent it over. What do they print it or not is a different story.
Apparently, they didn't.
Yeah, it's just a matter of...
Thank you, Tricia. Okay, so getting back to how we're going to deliver information to the public, so it's as orderly as possible. So, we've got, first, we, first to present is the capital improvement and reserve account articles on page four of 10 of the warrant. Second chunk of information is the expense, expense budget articles on page five of 10. Next, on page six of 10, we've got the rescue, and then on the bottom of page six of 10, we've got the last bit involving highway to cemeteries. Those are just business articles, but this is going over numbers, you know, and explaining, explaining changes, you know, what things are for, so... Thoughts, suggestions?
Whatever I may do.
All right, well, who wants capital improvements and reserve accounts? Who wants to summarize that for the public?
I'll take that one.
The Selectmen through Town Clerk, who wants to provide that summary?
Sure.
Okay, Donnie. Yeah, that'd be great.
I don't, I don't know, I don't know that they've been asked. I haven't been asked to be the young one.
I...
But typically, we also share our feeling as to why our numbers were different.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right. For whatever reason.
No, please, I didn't real, yeah, please call, you know, contact your members.
That's just before, what day is it?
Thursday.
This Thursday?
This Thursday. All right, Dave, do you want fire, rescue to EMS, or highways to cemeteries?
No preference.
All right. All right, so, all right, I'll take fire to EMS, and Dave will take highways to cemeteries. All right. Any other Selectmen communication? All right, I'll make a motion that we move into executive session pursuant to MRSA Title 1, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1. Did we miss something on the agenda?
Couple of things, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Under other business, runaway extension, chapter summer, you know, one previous to that, NVRC information.
Oh, yeah, this is, let me get to that. Just printouts that John provided us from his meeting that he participated in last Monday in Augusta. So, it's, they don't, it's just information, they don't require an, an action, but if you certainly, so it's the, it's the six-page Northern Borders Grant.
Could you refresh my memory on the total amount of money in that grant process?
Just $500,000.
Yeah.
A million one three?
Total project, $500,000 from Northern Border, $500,000 from M&amp;H, $60,000 from M&amp;H, and $80,000 from the town. And both of those are in kind.
In terms of an update, has there been any more information relative to this project?
It was just discussed, we had Kenny Haley here last, last meeting, and basically, the deadline was the 11th, John, for this Northern Borders.
May 11th is when we had to submit it.
Yeah.
The only thing that was, I'm still waiting, I need to talk to Mark Hune, because it came up that if there's a way to, because they have money in there to overlay that road this year.
That's right, they weren't...
So, I want to be able to discuss it with him in terms of, you know, don't just, you know, if you agree, don't just take the money and pave an extra five miles somewhere else in the next year. If we don't get the Northern Border Grant, tell them if you don't have any money for overlay. So, I want to make sure that, you know, he utilizes that money that's going to be allocated well, without jeopardizing if we don't get money. So, that's, that's the only thing for an update, is to talk with Mark about, because it came up, it makes no sense to put pavement there, only to tear it up the following year and build it.
Right. Yes.
On that grant, thought about the in-kind donation, where other contractors made aware of this grant and have an opportunity to see what their in-kind donation might have been?
No. No. This was offered by M&amp;H, because they own the industrial park land out there, they own the land where they have a big housing development, and it was to their interest, certainly, to offer that kind of help. So, that was how, why it was put in, and it was, it was put in because the grant, people who look at these grants, they encourage public-private partnerships, so that's why it was actually put in there, because it would enhance the grant application to show that we have a public-private partnership. That's, that's how it came together, so...
I'm just thinking someone could have made it more generous offer, if they were aware of that.
I don't know, how many other contractors do you have right in town here? I think they're the biggest contractor that could do it.
You know, these would be assumptions, you know?
And let's see here. Steve, to, to follow up, the other two items under the Town Manager Report, it's just an informational summary that was handed out at the Augusta meeting last Monday that the Board didn't attend, but John brought it back and shared. So, if you'd like, Rebecca would have a copy as well. I don't know if she's handed this out to the Airport Commissioner or not, but she would, she would have this.
Yeah, presentation. Who gave the presentation that Monday night? As far as I am aware of, it's a go, public financing in September. Except, that's what I got out of you, the project is a go, public financing in September. Might have a go.
Mark?
Is that something, someone can get a copy of?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
We, they're predicting we would know by August, that's very well the September comes, so we would know whether or not we're getting it moved up from 2019 to 18. That's what's been forward.
The other thing that did come to the attention of the Board the other day was the asphalt breakdown of that Mount JR was $1.45 million, which we were not planning on doing until 2020, which actually reduces the total bid lower than the yesterday, if you calculated the fact that they're going to pay the dollar right now, because we were going to raise another $1.5 million in 2020. It's going to be done in 18 or 19, in the number. You follow me?
Yeah, but it's still within the grant. I mean, though the timing was, was set out, it's still, it's still the...
In 19, 20, you will not have it out. Request to pay this right...
So, has the capital improvement plan been updated to reflect that?
I don't know that. I know the schedule for 2020 was to pay the, now it's scheduled to pay the new project, so you won't be asked to spend $1.5 million.
The voters won't be asked.
I'm sorry?
The voters won't be asked.
Well, we will be asked to spend $1.5 million in 2020, which would...
In response to your comment, though, it would, it would reflect that in, in 2020. It's certainly not going to reflect it in capital this year.
Right, so that would be a, a change in the capital improvement plan for this?
I think it's important to note that many times in these public hearings and the Selectmen's meetings, there have been erroneous numbers thrown up there as to what our future exposure is, and Larry's point answers that. Our future exposure, because of the way this project is going now, will be significantly less in 2020.
You won't need to raise 5% of $1.5 million in a year and a half.
Okay.
You follow me?
Yeah. Mark?
Have the Selectmen seen a copy of the proposed capital improvement plan for the next five years?
It, it hasn't been in our packets, no. It could be in our next packet.
The capital improvement plan for the airport?
Yes.
Yeah, we all have a map. We've all been given a master plan for the airport, so it's in there.
Well, there was one in 2012, and then there was a new one in the environmental assessment, and now there was a newer one yet proposed, like that last Monday's Airport Commission meeting. I didn't know if all this information was shared with the Selectmen or not, where the Airport Commission is and the Advisory Committee, do you follow?
No, I have to go back and look. It's not ringing a bell. I mean, definitely not the one from the most recent meeting, if it was earlier this month, so... All right, so I think, Steve, that took care of...
What might that be?
What I skimmed over, because basically it was just information, I didn't...
Yeah, I appreciate it, I'm impressed.
All right, so I will make a motion that we'll go into executive session pursuant to MRSA Title 1, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 4056A, for the, to discuss personnel with Emily, who will be phoning in. All those in favor? And not two hands.